Good afternoon and welcome to the regular meeting of the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners. We're all happy and don't have any problems or needs. The weather is nice outside and the Commissioners' Meeting Room is filled with people in uniform. And I'm either headed for the jail, or I'm doing something wrong, or I'm going to give you guys anything you want today. This is an interesting, interesting meeting because usually we have people who want to speak to the Commissioners. They'll come in, sign up, and I trust if that's what you all are doing, you've signed about 25 cards outside and you handed it to our clerk, Ashley Sloop. Otherwise, you can't speak unless I say it's okay. That's one of the nice things about being an elected official. However, I'm not going to do that. What I am going to do, however, is ask Bobby Kimbrough to come forward and give us some sunlight on why you all are in the Commissioners' Meeting Room. And first of all, Bobby, are you in the room yourself?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just take a moment. You can take five, 10, 10 minutes, or an hour, whatever. You're the sheriff. I surrender. And most of you fellows know Bobby Kimbrough, and he's an excellent sheriff, and I'm glad you're here. I know you didn't expect this, but I thought with this many law enforcement people in the office, probably be a good idea to talk about it.
First of all, I appreciate you, Commissioner Plowler. I can appreciate all of the Commissioners here today. County manager, appreciate all of you all. Of course, I appreciate the men and women that serve every day at the detention center, serve every day as first responders throughout this county. So I guess the purpose of the meeting today, or one of the purposes and the reason that they are here is to discuss compensation, retention for the men and women that serve in the detention center. We are currently, it's no secrets, our numbers are very high in terms of people that are resigning, people that are leaving, people that are leaving for various reasons. Me and the county manager and his staff have been working diligently this week. One of the things that he brought to my attention is that, is that is for every one person, there are two jobs out there for every person. The problem with that, those two jobs are paying more than our one job is, as relates to some of the men and women that work over there. My purpose for being here today is hope that the county manager, with the blessings of the Commissioners, will agree on the things that we have talked about, myself and the county manager. He shared with me some of the things that he thought was fair, marketable, and competitive. My thing has always been, I understand the word competitive, I understand that, but I never want to be competitive. I want to be first. I don't want to be compared to Guilford County. I don't want to be compared to nowhere but Forsyth. I think that we have a chance to be the drum majors, to set the benchmark, to draw people to come and work in the capacity of detention. And the reason the men and women are here, they have stuck with us through the storm. They are working hard, they're working mandatory overtime. We have people from patrol working in there to deal with the crisis, and we're dealing with it. We are dealing with it. And I just felt that we need to see the faces of the men and women that work in the detention center to understand the stress that we are dealing with over there. And hopefully, I know that me and Dr. Martin have been having conversations. I know that money is not a fix-all. I get that, I understand that, I do. But money is a motivator. In real life, it is. I was talking with the sheriff, the chief deputy this morning in Guilford County, and he shared something very interesting with me. We had him on speakerphone, myself, Chief Johnner, Layland, some of the other ones. They were at 100 down in their detention. They were at 100. They're currently at 70-something is what I was told. But they're closing in on that number based on the signing bonuses, hiring bonuses, and some of the things that they have done over there. And what they have found is, is what he shared with me, is that every hiring recruitment session that they're having now, they're having a plethora of people show up because of the signing bonuses. And you're right, when the job market is two jobs for every one person, money is a factor. Money is a factor. And so that's why we're here today. No other reason. It's always good to see our county Commissioners. Make no mistake about it. I appreciate all of you all. I do. I know sometimes we don't agree, but I still walk away knowing that I'm in the best place in the world. And I'm just hoping that you hear our voices, you hear the pain in their voices, and you see that they're more deserving of what we're asking for. If it was my way, I would give them more than what the county manager has recommended. I think what he has recommended is, in his words, competitive, but that word competitive to me, if you finish fourth, you're competitive. I don't, never want to be competitive. I don't. We are the first, and Forsyth County is the best, and that is why I'm asking for, if God sees a kindness in your heart, a little more than that, we would be gratefully accepted to that. And that is why I'm here, and I appreciate you, Mr. Plowler. I appreciate you for allowing me to stand here and share that. Thank you, sir.
Sheriff, you know, I've been here since 1959, not in this room, but in this county. It's the first time I've seen this, this many deputy sheriffs in the Commissioners' Meeting Room, and I'm delighted that all of you are here. I would like, if it's all right, to ask all of you if you'd like to stay. That's fine, but this is a briefing session. What that generally means is we ain't going to vote. We're going to talk about it until the sun goes down.
This is a regular meeting. We'll get to that.
Oh, wait a minute. I just got informed by the vice chairman of the County Commissioners that we are going to vote. When are we going to vote?
We're going to have a regular meeting.
Okay.
Coming up, and then we will have a briefing.
You get somebody.
At which time, I believe that our county manager will address the very issue that the sheriff has pointed out.
Can't get a word in edgewise, but that's the kind of power I have here today. So, we will vote, but it looks, usually we vote, and then we're going to have the briefing. Is that all right with you, County Manager?
Absolutely. I guess, obviously, the public side of the meeting has an opportunity for public comment, so if folks are here to speak, I think that makes a ton of sense. I guess I just, I know the dire nature of the situation at jail, and I'm a little concerned that there's enough people over there right now to be taking care of things. So that's just my own, my own concern around that. Time-wise, it will probably take us an hour to get through the formal meeting, and then we'll be picking up the briefing, I don't think any earlier than three. So if, you know, folks are, they work for you, Sheriff, so you can do whatever you want to do. I hate that folks are having to stand right this minute. We will be to that issue no sooner than 3 o'clock, just from a, from a staffing management perspective, so. But with that, we probably need to go ahead and proceed so we can get started with the formal meeting.
We could do that. Let me tell you what, though. I do have some power as the chairman of the board, so I would like to, if you guys, ladies and gentlemen, would like to speak, you really do, everybody in the county has to do this, fill out a card and give it to Ashley Sloop, and we will get this, rather than keep you here for an hour, an hour and a half, and that's exactly what's going to happen. But we will allow you to speak, and you each get three minutes apiece. And if there's people in here who want to speak against it, we'll do that, because that's what a public session is. But in the meantime, having said all of that, if you haven't gotten one of those cards, please do that and get that done. That gives us a record of the people who had a chance to speak and da-da-da-da-da.
Chairman, if I may, I'd like to address our sheriff and the detention officer that's in the room as well. I'm only speaking now because I'm going to have to leave the governor's here at Winston Hill State, so I need to be there. But I wanted to say to our High Lord Sheriff that I plan on supporting you for whatever you need, and I appreciate the detention center employees being here. We understand your needs. There's, they're going to get into the lock study later on. We were hopeful that the support that we gave last year was enough, but we're finding that it's not. Nevertheless, I wanted you to hear it from me that I plan on supporting, so thank you for your comments and your sentiments today, Sheriff Kimbrough. Thank you, Chairman.
Any comments from any of the other Commissioners?
I think we need to start our meeting.
Well, we're going to do that. And one of the first things we do is start, to tell us the God truth, we start our meeting with a prayer. So I will ask us to all stand and ask Commissioner Don Martin if he'll lead us all in the opening invocation.
We actually have someone to deliver our invocation.
We do?
Yes.
Who is it?
We have President Paul Hyatt from the Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints.
Well, my gosh, we got, welcome back.
Thank you for being here, and if you are able to stand, please do, most are, and then we'll follow that with a pledge of allegiance.
Hey, what do you think about the way we run the meeting? Is that all right with you?
It's cool.
Ah, preacher who said it's cool, that's good. All right, let me stand. All right, sir.
Our dear heavenly Father, we are so thankful for the many privileges and freedoms we enjoy in this country. We are so grateful for the blessing of government by the voice of the people, and are thankful for these individuals who work here this day for what they do, much more than a job. It is a great service to us, and we pray for their blessing, for their, for their families, for their personal lives as well. We pray sincerely that the proceedings of this meeting might be blessed with inspiration towards meeting the needs of individuals in Forsyth County. In this blessing, we sincerely ask for, in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner Ted Kaplan.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Just to reiterate what's been mentioned earlier, anyone wishing to participate in the public session portion of the meeting, particularly remotely by telephone, please call 336-422-1200, and you will be placed on hold until the public session begins. And again, that number, 336-422-1200. For those of you in the audience, if you want to speak, you need to complete one of our speaker cards, which are outside on a little table. Please out one of the, please fill one out, and you can deliver it to our clerk, Mrs. Ashley Sloop. And as we have started every regular meeting for, basically since 2020, Joshua Swift, our Public Health Director, is going to give us a COVID-19 update. Joshua, you're on.
All right. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Let me pull up.
While you're waiting, if those of you who have not filled out a card, this would be a good opportunity for you to go get it, bring it back in, so we can get it to Mrs. Sloop.
All right. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I have a very brief update on COVID-19 and monkeypox. Over the last 14 days, our cases have leveled off. We're just at a, we've seen a 3% decrease over the past few weeks. Hospitalizations are down, we're at 16 Forsyth County residents who are currently hospitalized. You can see this snapshot of the last seven months from COVID-19. You see on the far left, that's when we were coming down from the Omicron surge in early, mid-February. You can see we stayed very low, then we got up over 800 in mid-May, mid to late May, and we've stayed in the 800 to 900 range. A few weeks ago, we crested at over 1,000 cases. These are lab-confirmed cases, not at-home test kits, or people have done that testing. It's where you went to your doctor, went through a hospital to be tested, that's what we have here. And you can see now, though thankfully, we're seeing a decrease as of our last numbers, which were through September the 3rd. New boosters are available now. The fall booster is a bivalent vaccine. That means it covers two variants, the original variant and Omicron, which is BA5. This is similar to what you see when you get your flu vaccine. It usually has three or four variants that a normal flu vaccine covers based on what's circulating. It's available now at the Department of Public Health. We started it today, and anyone who is fully vaccinated is eligible. They just have to have had their last vaccine, it been at least two months prior.
You'll have to wait 15 minutes after the shot.
Yes. So we still have a little bit of wait for your safety. What you can do now, obviously make sure you have an at-home test kit. We have test kits down here in the government center. Thank you to Scott Angel and General Services for working that out. We have it in all of the library branches and at the health department. One person, a person can come in and get two of those kits at a time, get the booster, like that is available, that's important right now, and you can wear a mask indoors if you want to for added protection. So those are, you know, we're encouraging the public to do the most right there. The biggest thing is, I would tell people, is to get the booster to stay up to date on their vaccines, and also to have that test kit available at home. Don't wait till you're sick to come out and get it. Have it, that tool in your toolbox, so when you, if you do get sick, you can test yourselves.
Yes, sir. Do you, do you have to have an appointment to get the vaccine, the booster now?
Well, I would encourage people, because we've seen a little, an uptick, we're encouraging people to do that. For the most part, it's a good bet, if you come, we can fit you in, but we'd encourage people to call our main number and make an appointment.
Is there a time of day that's slower than any other time of day that you could communicate to folks that would, if they do just show up?
That's really, it's tough to tell right now. I mean, we've, we're seeing a little bit of an uptick, but, and we can share that on Facebook, the best times. Usually primarily, usually around lunchtime, you know, just like you think about the grocery store or any other place, closer to the end of the day, it gets a little busier. At the very beginning, it's a little bit busier, that's probably a good rule of thumb. Monkeypox, real quick, over 21,000 cases in the U.S., almost 400 in North Carolina, and we have 17 cases so far in Forsyth County. We have the vaccine, that vaccine also available, five days a week at the health department. You can call 703-3100 to make an appointment. That's for only people that meet the criteria set aside by the CDC. We've administered close to 700 doses so far, and probably the next time I come to meet you, I'll be talking about the flu vaccine, which we'll be starting to do that in October.
Oh, boy.
So there's a lot of vaccine out there. This weekend, we'll be at the Fiesta, offering COVID-19 vaccine, and then also we'll be, we're offering back-to-school vaccines as well, and we'll be at the Community Fun Fair, Fun Fest, September 24th, offering a COVID-19 vaccine as well as flu vaccine. So I'd be happy to take any questions.
One real quick one, I'm sorry, one real quick one. Is, is the brand issue making any difference anymore, Pfizer, Moderna, whatever, excuse me?
Yeah, that is a personal preference. Some people, you know, we do have Moderna and Pfizer as far as that booster, new booster that's available. Some people are choosing, you know, I've even heard and talked to Dr. Olds choosing maybe their first three doses where Moderna decided to get Pfizer for the second one, or this booster, really a personal preference.
Got it, thank you. Other questions for Joshua?
Just one question, Mr. Vice Chair. This will be the last booster for COVID for the year?
Assume that it's this late in the year, I would assume so, Dr. Olds, Mr. Elamine.
All right, then.
So.
Thank you, Joshua.
Yeah.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. The first item on the agenda is a resolution recognizing September 2022 as National Infant Mortality Awareness Month and support of the 11th Annual Walk a Mile to Save Our Babies in Forsyth County. Roberta Hawthorne of Social Services is here to receive the resolution. Please come forward, Roberta. And Commissioner Whittenhunt, will you please read the resolution?
I will. Hello. Resolution recognizing September 2022 as National Infant Mortality Awareness Month in support of the 11th Annual Walk a Mile to Save Our Babies in Forsyth County, North Carolina. Whereas the month of September is National Infant Mortality Awareness Month, and it is imperative to increase community awareness about the high rates of infant deaths. Whereas Forsyth County communities are encouraged to support women and mothers-to-be in such a way as to ensure their health and well-being, and that of their children. Whereas Walk a Mile to Save Our Babies will coincide with events across the nation to bring attention to high rates of infant mortality. Whereas in 2019, 43 Forsyth County infants died before their first birthday, and in 2020, 31 Forsyth County infants died before their first birthday, figures equal 5,920 years of potential life lost. Whereas in 2020, Forsyth County's infant mortality rate was 7.2 deaths per 1,000 live births, and exceeded the statewide raise, rate of 6.9. Whereas Forsyth County African-American babies died disproportionately when compared to other babies, accounting for 55% of infant deaths in the most recent reporting year. Whereas prematurely and low birth weight, birth defects, sudden and expected infant death, and unsafe sleep practices are significant contributions to infant deaths disproportionately affect minority communities. And whereas the Forsyth County Infant Mortality Reduction Coalition has endeavored to foster a spirit of awareness and quality to combat the incidence of infant mortality and maternity mortality. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners hereby recognize the month of September as Infant Mortality Awareness Month and support the goals of the Forsyth County Infant Mortality Reduction Coalition efforts to raise awareness of the problem of infant mortality in our community with the 11th Annual Walk a Mile to Save Our Babies. And be it further resolved that the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners challenge all public and private entities to better understand their role in addressing the social behavior and health factors that affect birth outcomes, and in so do and protect and promote the health of Forsyth County youngest and most vulnerable citizens adopted this day of September 2022.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is a resolution approving.
Mr. Vice Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry, Roberta, would you like to say something? Excuse me.
Just on behalf of the Forsyth County Infant Mortality Reduction Coalition, thank you all so much for your support. We are on track for this to be the most well-attended Walk a Mile to Save Our Babies event since we started holding this annual event, and we are very appreciative for the support we've gotten from the Commissioners.
What's the date for the event?
September 21st. It's a Wednesday.
I plan to walk a mile that day.
We'll be walking with you.
Thank you, Roberta. The next item on the agenda is a resolution approving legislative goals and submission of such goals to the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners for consideration at its Legislative Goals Conference. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Motion by Chairman Plowler.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Elamine. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. The next item on the agenda is a proclamation recognizing the accomplishments of Darren Ziegler, Forsyth County Emergency Services Director. That actually was prepared, actually before his service, and we're officially adopting that today. Is there a motion?
Move, approve. Second.
Motion by Chairman Plowler, second by Commissioner Elamine. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item is the approval of minutes for the meeting of August 25th, 2022. Is there a motion?
Move, approve.
Motion by Chairman Plowler.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Elamine. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, do we have any calls or cards for the public session?
Mr. Vice Chairman, we don't have any calls, but we have one speaker card.
All righty.
Ben Greider, please come forward. State your name and address for the record. Ben Greider, please come forward. State your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon. My name is Ben Greider, Winston-Salem. I'm here today to bring attention to a matter that concerns me. It's in regards to the lack of oversight and comprehensive policy for how the Forsyth County Sheriff's Office is allowed to run their social media accounts. On August 16th of this year, the Forsyth County Sheriff's Office made a post on their department-run Instagram and Facebook page, a picture of a private citizen's Facebook post that included the person's name and photo. The woman's who posted was being shared via screenshot to the sheriff's department's page was not a media outlet, a journalist, a public official, or a public figure of any kind. Nor was anyone wanted for questioning in connection to any crime or missing persons case. No, the person was a woman whose son was being held in a county jail and had recently been in altercation that required him to visit the hospital. The woman was criticizing the sheriff's office and presenting the facts regarding her son as she understood them. The Forsyth County Sheriff was not wanting to just refute possible circulating claims made about the department, but to single out a single private citizen that made a post using her personal, personal social media account. Whether her or the department is more correct in regards to the facts of the case is not my immediate concern. Hopefully, the State Bureau of Investigation can do the job, do its job and figure out that. What my real concern is how a county department with an elected sheriff lacks any kind of accountability with what they're allowed to post with no discretion or limits from comprehensive social media policy. How is it that an individual's right to free speech can effectually be silenced by our county sheriff? The woman's post being shared with the sheriff's own personal remarks brought the woman's post far more attention than would have received on its own and brought hundreds, hundreds from the thousands of followers the sheriff's department has following them on social media to go to the woman's Facebook profile and fill her post with hundreds of hate-filled comments that ranged in severity to blaming her for her son being in jail to insulting her personal appearance. She eventually had to delete the post because of the harassment that Sheriff Kimbrough's followers gave her. The sheriff's department has a lot more power and influence than a citizen like me or any one of you acting on their own. But Sheriff Kimbrough decided to recklessly and unprofessionally use and abuse his power to personally attack someone he had a grievance with. The department could have addressed the open case and refuted the claims that they believed to be inaccurate without targeting an individual on social media and subjecting them to cyberbullying and harassment. The Forsyth County Sheriff's Office has set a dangerous precedent, and as of now, there is nothing stopping them from targeting you or I. I urge you to hold Bobby Sheriff Kimbrough and his department accountable for their harm and abuse of power and implement a social media policy that addresses how they're allowed to engage. Thank you for your time, commissioners, or yield, yield my time.
Thank you. No other communications? Mr. County Manager, please continue with the remainder of the agenda.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman, and good afternoon, board members and staff, and lots of staff and guests. We do have some business items for consideration this afternoon. We have reviewed these in briefing sessions, have hopefully answered, answered all the questions. So I'll go ahead and dive into it. We've got a couple of budget finance, finance items. Item six is a resolution ratifying a contract between Forsyth County, North Carolina Department of Public Safety and Youth Collaborative Incorporated for Youth Intensive Intervention Services from Project X. You've got an associated budget ordinance amendment that appropriate $63,611 for intensive intervention services for youth age 13 through 20 with high-risk recidivism.
May the approval?
Second. By Commissioner Whiston-Hunt to approve, second by Commissioner McDaniel. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item seven is an amendment to the fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget ordinance to appropriate gun and gang initiative funding available for appropriation. This will free up $329,725, and this will flow into the JCPC process for programming.
Move approval. Second.
Motion approved by Commissioner McDaniel, second by Chairman Plyler. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
All right. You've got two grants items. Item eight is an amendment to the fiscal year 2022, 23 budget ordinance that appropriate streamflow rehabilitation assistance or strap grant funds for watershed restoration activities that appropriate $80,000 for that purpose.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Elamene?
Second.
Second by Chairman Plyler. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item nine is a resolution authorizing acceptance of a grant from the Winston-Salem Foundation Incorporated to support the microenterprises IDA program, Individual Development Account Program. You've got an associated budget ordinance amendment that's going to appropriate $80,000 for each of three years. Really is kind of an expansion to the program that really you started several years ago. And the fact that Winston-Salem Foundation is interested in providing some funding for it really is a recognition of the program's success.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion approved by Commissioner Elamene, second by Chairman Plyler. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
We've got one ARPA item. It is a resolution approving revised and new county policies to aid in administering federal coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds from the American Rescue Plan Act. You've got one new program income policy, and then you've got some revisions to the federal procurement policy and allowable cost policy. And it's just some indication of how complex these dollars are to administer.
May the approval?
Motion approved by Chairman, excuse me, Commissioner Whiston-Hunt, second by Chairman Plyler. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, you've got three interlocal agreements. You've got a resolution ratifying and authorizing the expenditure of city-county utility commission funds generated by out-of-county services for the construction and municipal infrastructure improvements at the Stoneterrace community. This is also an ARPA project for $400,000. We're deep in the ARPA round two now, and my suggestion would be to postpone this, or the correct word, I guess, we would table it pending kind of what we do with the ARPA plan.
I move approval that we table this item.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Whiston-Hunt, second by Chairman Plyler. Any discussion? I think that's a great idea. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item 12 is a resolution ratifying and authorizing execution in a local agreement between Forsyth County and the city of Winston-Salem regarding the shared use of 2022 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance or JAG funds. You've got an associated budget ordinance amendment that's going to appropriate $255,662. In total grant funding, the county portion's 127,831. This year, it's administered by the city of Winston. Next year, it'll be us. And the sheriff, I believe, wants to use us for the real-time intelligence center.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion approved by Commissioner Elamene, second by Chairman Plyler. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item 13, you've got a resolution ratifying and authorizing execution from an interlocal agreement between Forsyth County and the city of Winston-Salem and the town of Kernville regarding the shared use of North Carolina Governor's Highway Safety Program Traffic Safety Project Grant Award for the continuation of the Forsyth County DWI Task Force. You've got an associated mutual assistance agreement between those agencies. This is a grant $76,376. There is a fairly significant match, which our portion of that is $64,350.
Move approval.
Approved by Chairman Plyler.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Elamene. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Got a number of contract items. If I could just turn to Gordon real quickly, because we had a lot of discussion in the last briefing session around sort of the, the, our approach to this, which partly is really driven by some federal, some federal rules that were, that have been around a while, but they were really promulgated in the interim guidance for ARPA. And it has to do with what I believe is really a policy matter. And so if I could just get Gordon to kind of explain how we sort of got to where we are with this, that'd be great.
So there, one of the benefits of the whole ARPA situation is it has brought into clearer focus to us the responsibilities of contracts when there are federal funds involved. And so one of the things you just approved was a slight, very slight change to the federal procurement policy. We didn't have that until February of this year, but that very clearly lays out how we do different bidding processes for contracts involving federal funds. So it's not just ARPA. It's all contracts involving federal funds. And so part of that is, for certain contracts, when you bid it out, you're allowed to bid it out in different ways, but you have to announce how you're bidding it out and what the criteria are on the front end. So when you send out your bid package, you can either determine if you want it to be low-cost, and, and that would mean whoever is the low-cost is, wins, is granted the contract. Or you could combine cost with some other factors, or in some circumstances, you, you may not use cost. But, so, so that's where you get the matrices, where you have cost being 30% or 70% or 90%, whatever. But if you do that, if you put out that bid package and you say, this is the matrix I'm going to use to determine who is the winning bidder, you have to follow that unless you just want to reject all bids and start over. So where there's federal money involved, where we get to this state, it's kind of a go-no-go situation. We can either rebid or we can approve the winning bidder of this. And you as the board, of course, do not have to, you can reject the bids. You don't have to approve whoever the winning bidder is. As the manager indicated, the policy decision, and we talked about this a little bit last week, is whether we always want to go with low bid or whether sometimes we don't. And, and so that's something, you know, we, we can take instruction from you as the board as to how you'd like to do that, but it really does need to be decided upfront before the bids go out. Under, under state contracts, it's a little bit easier because you can say, we're going to consider, you know, who is best, but you don't really have to necessarily define exactly how you're going to do that. But under the federal, under the contracts using federal money, you really do have to specifically say what you're going to consider. So I just wanted to clarify that. And as, as manager said, there are some policy, policy decisions that are built into this process.
And we, I think, at staff level, we heard loud and clear that, you know, that we want that cost factor to be higher. There, you know, trying to pre-qualify the bidders on the front end in some structure before you get to the bid process is hard to do. I think all that really is intimated in, in the, if you use a matrices, you sort of decide that on the front end, it's advertised, everybody sees it, and they kind of know, and can react to that. So I'll be looking for guidance from the board around how to do that. And if you want us to bring in front of you the matrices in advance, if y'all want to have a policy discussion about the matrices, or if there's sort of a standard way you want us to proceed with that, what I'll commit to you is, if the management level will make sure that there's a doggone good argument for whatever that, if, if we say cost is 5% or 30% or 90%, we'll, we'll have a good argument. We'll make sure that we articulate that as part of these items, because we, we heard loud and clear the sensitivity around that. And we'll report to you the total prices as they came in, which we failed to do last Thursday, and that was my fault.
Rather than put the board in, excuse me, in a situation where we have to make a quick decision, I would suggest that we table this issue until we can get information from the staff, which will pointedly make it easy to do what we're supposed to be doing every day.
Yeah. And I'm not suggesting we, we're going to make a decision. There's even a decision made about that, but guidance from y'all as we move forward with these will be, will be helpful. And, 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 you know, we want to make sure we do this well. So, um,
Good.
Yeah. So anyway, let me go ahead and dive into the items, and then we, you've seen some of that, because we provided some information after the fact on some of these where there were questions. The first one is a resolution awarding a contract for the purchase of law enforcement duty footwear. That program's been in place for a long time in the sheriff's department. I think Randy Hunsucker had provided an email that really talked about their desire to have a storefront where folks can come get fitted and then, and then put that voucher in. You know, the, so, so, in, in that, that, while there's really no cost impact to this, I mean, you are selecting a vendor. And so, you know, that, that is the, the recommendations there.
I move approval.
Second.
Motion approved by Commissioner Whiston-Hunt, and we have a second by Commissioner Elamene. I've just got one comment. I read Randy Hunsucker's memorandum, and, and basically, basically, because the city and the county both buy, buy our shoes from one vendor here, then that makes it okay. And that doesn't make it okay in my book. However, there are provisions, and, and my attorney could certainly talk to about those, is that, you know, sometimes there's a single, a person, a reason to have a single-source vendor. And there's, there's a process to go through to have a single-source vendor. I'd feel comfortable going through that process and that we do it, and that would work. On the other hand, I also think that there's, I'm a little disappointed to the extent that our city-county purchasing was involved in this action, which was indicated in the memorandum, that they want a better job in terms of we need to be cultivating or at least contacting every single footwear provider here to see that that can work. But advertising a bid and getting 10 bids from other places that are all rejected, because the criteria is going to be, it's got to be local, then you talk about people knowing what they're bidding on with conditions. I'd suggest they did not know that. Otherwise, why would you bid if you can't provide a local service? So it's a perfect example of something that really does need some attention. I'm certainly going to support today and move on, but I, I do think we can do a much better job. So all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Item 15 is resolution awarding a contract for administrative and fiscal temporary staffing services for the Forsyth County Department of Social Services, not to exceed $80,000. And the recommended bidder, based on the matrix, was the resource. You did get an email from Chantel, I believe, yesterday afternoon that sort of outlined a little further the, the process that we went through.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion approved by Commissioner Elamene, second by Chairman Plyler. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No.
Agenda item 16 is a resolution authorizing execution of agreement between Forsyth County and Wake Forest University Baptist Medical Center for mammography screening and diagnostic services. This contract amount is, I hope I got that right, $76,075. There's some county money in it, so the not to exceed amount will be $115,000.
Mr. Chairman, I move where you table that until we get an exact figure.
That's correct, sir.
He's got the right.
I move approval.
That is correct.
I pick a motion from Commissioner Whiston-Hunt.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Elamene. I, discussion, I want, I just conversation, and particularly in behalf of Commissioner McDaniel. She commented last week about the very issue that there are other folks who provide mammogram services in this community, and that perhaps we should be getting some proposals from all of them. I'm not so sure that our relationship with Atrium Wake Forest Baptist as our medical director is a reason to select them solely as a provider of mammogram services. If somebody can make a case for that, why it is, then that would, that could certainly be discussed. But there, there's a number of places that provide that service. I can think of two off the top of my head.
Well, I think the cost is the same under that structure, but we'll, we'll get that squared away.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item 17 is resolution awarding and authorizing execution of a contract with Rhino Sports Entertainment Services, LLC for security services at various parks, facilities, and festival lights. It is a multi-year contract, total $381,158, and year one cost is $109,360.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion approved by Chairman Plyler, second by Commissioner Elamene. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item 18 is resolution authorizing execution of a contract to provide services for print processing and mail services. We did this a little differently because we combined tax administration and board of elections in this. Contract is multi-year, but it's, the total's $945,000, and the company's master's touch.
Move approval.
Motion approved by Chairman Plyler, second by Commissioner Whiston-Hunt. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item 19 is a resolution authorizing execution of a contract to provide business, personal property auditing and audit appealed defense services to tax management associates not to exceed $450,000, and that is a multi-year agreement as well.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion approved by Chairman Plyler, second by Commissioner Elamene and Commissioner Linville. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And item 20 is a resolution authorizing execution of financial advisory agreement between Forsyth County and First Tryon Securities LLC to serve as the county's financial advisor. The, the company is, well, we had Hilltop under a previous arrangement. They had some staffing changes, and so we went back out. Our First Tryon Advisors is the recommended agency for that. And you received an email from, I think through me, from Lee Plunkett that kind of outlined the thought process that they had through that recommendation.
Move approval.
Motion approved by Chairman Plyler, second by Commissioner Linville. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
All right. Um, you've got the second reading on the amendments to the Franchise Ordinance Agreement for Residential and Small Business Solid Waste Collection Transportation Disposal Services and for adding optional recycling services. Um, this passes along the tipping fee that the landfill, uh, implemented. I think it was a nine-cent adjustment or something like that.
Move approval. Second.
Motion approved by Chairman Plyler, second by Commissioner Alameen. Um, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
All right. You've got two items related to tax administration refunds. You've got, uh, item 22, resolution approving refunds for the tax assessor collector, the amount of $683.95, and $18,032.10 out of the North Carolina Vehicle Tax System, respectively.
Move approval.
Motion approved by Chairman Plyler, sec, second by Commissioner Linville. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And you've got reports. Uh, item 24, several reports. You've got the Forsyth County Animal Services Advisor Board Revised Bylaws. You've got a report of releases and adjustments for levy fiscal year 2021, 2022, a July 22 appropriation transfer report, July 22 contribution, contribution-based benefit cap report, and then item 28, signature flight support fuel tank removal.
Move approval. Second.
Motion approved by Chairman Plyler, second by Commissioner Linville. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And I am super glad that nobody left when I said we wouldn't get the meeting. The, the briefing started until 3:00, um, but that is all we have for the formal meeting. My suspicion is somebody wants to take a recess for about five minutes, and then, but we can certainly do whatever the board wishes are before we go into briefing.
Commissioner Kaplan.
I move that we adjourn to reconvene for briefing at 3:50, at 2:55.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Adjourn.